With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
All right, V and N Council has nothing on their agenda. We'll go right to the mayor's agenda. Charlie, please.
Good evening. The mayor's apologies. He has a personal family matter today and also will not be at council on Thursday related to the same family issue. And since there was nothing on our agenda last time, I get about 12, okay? So we'll go through them. Yes. Somehow I got sandbagged on this somehow. Number one, authorizing the proper city officials to sign all necessary documents related to awarding HVAC maintenance and emergency services contract to the two most qualified responsible firms, PLD Associates and Troy Mechanical, excuse me, for a two-year agreement with an option for a third year. Prevent a maintenance, repair, and on-call emergency service for HVAC systems in city-owned buildings. The contract will run from June 1st, 2023 to June 1st, 2025. This is another one of those service contracts that we have to have available firms ready for any type of HVAC disruption in any of our buildings.
Perfect timing.
Can we use them now?
We're working on it. I'm not saying we're going to resolve it, but we're working on it. What is it after COVID? I call it the dog ate my homework response. Supply problems. There are supply chain problems, yes. All right. Authorizing proper officials to take all necessary actions related to selling 110-112 Prospect Street parcel numbers as set forth for the purchase price of $1,900. It's approximately .11 acre, so about a tenth of an acre. It's one of these old properties that has no property, has no improvements on it. It's been just lame and the person who's going to purchase it is going to build a house on it, subject to side yards, et cetera, but it should be okay.
They're going to put a house on it?
Yes, that's our understanding. Authorizing the proper city officials to sign all necessary documents related to entering into a three-year contract with Penn Teledata Fiber Networks for $24,948 for Internet services for the city's operations at the Kirby Health Center. The full amount of this contract is being funded through a data modernization grant. And you'll see, I'll go through all three, but they're all related in the same way. They're all upgrades of our Internet capabilities through a health grant. Authorizing proper officials to sign all necessary documents related to entering a five-year contract with Penn Teledata Fiber Networks for $62,100 for Internet services for City Hall and the Police Department. Full amount of this contract is being funded through a data modernization grant. And authorizing the proper city officials to sign all necessary documents related to entering into a contract with CDW-G for $20,400 for computer network equipment. This purchase is being made through a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars. Full amount of this contract is also being funded fully through a data modernization grant. Those grants are through the State Health Department and they're all designed to increase access and availability of our Health Department to the residents of the city of Wilkes-Barre to speed up response, allow responses without having to physically go places, and provide information to all of our residents for health-related issues.
Charlie, were these put out for RFP?
No, they're specialty items, that's why. The one is a Co-Stars grant, the other ones it was not put out for RFP. Lastly, or not lastly, excuse me. Authorizing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement along with any and all project documents with Glick Fire Equipment Company, 350 Mill Creek Road, Burdenhand, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of 2022 Ford F-450 four-by-four Brown Liberty Type One ambulance in the amount of $367,750. The purchase is being made through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars, for the Bureau of Fire contract number. The price includes a deduction for a trade-in amount of a fire department ambulance, a 2016 Brown Ford F-450. Project will be funded pursuant to the Luzern County American Rescue Plan grant subrecipient agreement. So this is part of the application we made to the county ARP fund, and they approved this grant for a new ambulance. So we're going to end up with two new ambulances, which were very, very needed in the city. So kudos to the fire chief for working through this system and having the type of contacts that we need in the supply chain, and thanks to the county for at least one of these costs through their ARP program.
Chief, is this one of those where we won't have it for two years, that kind of thing? The last time we bought a piece of fire equipment, it was going to be two years down the road because of backup on COVID.
Funny you should ask that question. I think everyone would be able to read this right out of one of our ambulance catalogs, what it says on there. Ambulance chassis wait times soar, costs skyrocket, the supply chain is shot. The normal wait time is for two years. We're blessed we have some people in the industry that can help us along. You might ask why a 2022? Because we can get a 2022 chassis for it. So in my career, if you authorize this ambulance, our EMS fleet will be the best it's been in my 42 years with the fire department. So we ran them hard during COVID. It was difficult, but we have great staff and we have great equipment also.
Any other questions for chief? Anyone?
Not for the chief, no.
Thanks, chief.
Designating Mayor George C. Brown and Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the city of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining a requested grant of $500,000 along with any and all project documents related to the Mill Creek Brookside Levy System Rehab Project if the application is approved. The Mill Creek Levy is up for accreditation. It's fairly typical. The flood authority does that all along the levees. There probably going to be some, what appears to be some updates for the levy system, and we're looking for the grants in order to be able to make any modifications that may be required for the accreditation. This, chief, what's that, at least a year down the road, I would say?
We're in design phase right now. The Brookside Levy is in the design phase. We have the money for that, but in order to get it accredited and make the levy available for the accreditation, we need some additional funding.
So hopefully we'll receive the funding and we'll be able to move ahead for the Brookside Levy. And lastly, we have proposing an ordinance repealing Article 5 of Chapter 10 of the City of Wilkes-Barre Code of Ordinances entitled Consumer Fireworks and replacing with a new Article 5. This article is pursuant to a long amount of work over the last year, including the National League of Cities, which is a prototype ordinance pursuant to, if you recall, council recalls the state changed some laws last year in response to the difficulties that municipalities have had. Allows us a little bit more flexibility. It allows us to raise fines. So we're just updating the ordinance, proposing to update it consistent with the modifications that were made with the state laws. Again, as always, it's always a question of enforcement, and you can put all the laws on the books you want, but people are going to do what people are going to do, and unless we have a visual, it's very hard to enforce it. But we're using, trying to keep up and update the city and have as best the tools that we have that are available pursuant to the law, and we'll, again, do the best we can with the resources that we have to try to enforce this law. And this ordinance will give us a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more access to income should we be successful.
Charlie, just real quick, I was reading on that, that there's a form to fill out?
That's for an, yeah, there's an application that you can make if you approve it, but...
Is it complete? Is that application complete? I mean, do you have a copy of it?
No, I do not have that as of yet. It hasn't been drawn up. Subject to your ordinance, then we'll draw up. I mean, we have a form, but, you know, in a general sense, but we have it attached.
Not yet. All right. And then just another question, back to your internet here. I'm not sure why that wasn't put out for RFP.
Okay. We probably stand up. Herschel knows more about that than I do.
It's a continuation of service, professional services. It's through companies we already have, so there are more so renewals than anything. They would have been renewed at a later time anyway. We've always had renewals and we've never put them out for RFP except for in the beginning.
Would it make sense to do something like that? I mean, look around, maybe someone local or...
I have gotten other quotes.
I'm sorry?
I've gotten other quotes from other companies. But it wasn't a traditional RFP. I did investigate some prices, but they were all much higher.
Same services, so on and so forth?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is more of an upgrade type of situation. It's not a new contract for a whole new system. It's basically upgrading the present system that we have with all of these people in order to comply.
We're using them now.
Yeah, we're using them now. We got a couple of general quotes from some local, but they were higher.
Was it a two-year contract?
Yes, with an option for three, for another year.
Three-year, yeah.
Yeah. They had to, these would have continued on, but they had to be upgraded, so that's why we have to come back to council for it, because they're upgrading the existing contract with the new upgraded equipment.
Back to the fireworks. Do you think it's possible that the city could do an extensive public relations campaign? Maybe put our wonderful fire chief on a TV commercial talking about the dangers of fireworks vis-à-vis setting houses on fire, autistic children, veterans with PTSD, and of course, our dogs. Do you think that might be possible to do?
Yes. We've had some internal discussions on it. July 4th is the big one, not to say Memorial Day isn't, but it's, Memorial Day's upon us, and we just got that proposed modification, so we have to have the new one in. But yeah, we've had those discussions. I think we can move ahead. The media's been very helpful on those type of things where they get the word out as much as they can, and they've been more than willing to interview the chief and carry it on the newspapers and on the TV. So we'll reach out and do those type of things again.
Tony, I think that's a great idea. Good point. Because there's so many different things.
Educate them as much as you can.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may comment on Chief Delaney's proposed new ordinance. I know that you and the career fire chiefs have put a lot of work into this over the last year or two since that legislation changed at the state level. You've been working at Pennsylvania Municipal League and these fire chiefs across the country, because it's not just us that face this problem. It's all across, it's cities across the state since that legislation changed. I'd like to commend you on that. And I know that this ordinance that he's putting before us has been researched, embedded, correct me if I'm wrong, for legality, and I think it's a perfect fit for us, because basically, the way that new ordinance will read is consumer-grade fireworks are out legally in the city of Wilkes-Barre. There was that little loophole in there, 150 feet, that was in there that was really arbitrary and vague, so I commend you on that. I think it's a move in the right direction, and you wanted to talk about doing the PSA, the public service announcements. That's great, but we also need to remind people that consumer-grade fireworks with this ordinance, unless you have a permit, that you had mentioned previously, are out. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, they're out. There's no place in the city unless you have a permit to use these consumer-grade fireworks. So if you are using them and you don't have a permit, you're using them illegally and you're subject to that fine. And I would hope, as you had mentioned, that we can do something with enforcement. I know it's not easy.
The ordinance, it's a good point. The ordinance has a specific definition that by definition, there is no location in the city of Wilkes-Barre which would allow any type of commercial grade fireworks. So that's a good point to point out, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you for working on it. Thank you for bringing it forward, and I'm hoping it does pass. I think it's definitely something that we need to do. Councilman Brooks, I wanted to address one of the things that you said about the public, and I put some notes here. Requires sellers to conspicuously post or provide notice to purchasers of the prohibitions on consumer fireworks use, including notice to the individual municipalities that may have additional restrictions. So that's part of the law. Number two, if you recall, Act 43, 2017, only allotted $2 million of the 12% tax on fireworks. It's estimated there's 12 to 14 million brought in on that 12%, and now the new law designates that to the first-response community. So that monies are going back into that, and you all asked us to fight for local municipal authority to be able to do this. So Councilman Barrett talked about the Pennsylvania Municipal League. We actually took their boilerplate and used it, so it's been vetted. So we think it's going to be a huge help. One other thing, it authorizes confiscation of any unused fireworks being used in violation of the law. So while we really want a full repeal, that the appetite in Harrisburg wasn't to do that, but at least we got some distance with it. We got some yardage.
So chief, just real quick, do you want to add anything else? You want to say anything else about that?
No, I think the city administrator said it fairly well. There's no place in the city of Wilkes-Barre that is 150 yards from a building or vehicle. It includes the person sending it off, has to be 150 feet away from a vehicle or a building. And also, Tim Henry made sure that we retain the language that it's illegal to set them off in parks and streets. So if you take our parks, streets, and 150 feet from any building, I challenge you to find a place in Wilkes-Barre. So if you advocate for this, they're banned. You can't use them in Wilkes-Barre. And then it's up to the enforcement side to take it from there.
You would still be able to have fireworks within 150 feet in some lots, but you'd have to have their permission proper, permission of the owner of that lot.
Sure. And one of the things, not for us, but for other municipalities that might have space, it still makes them legal to be, let's say you did just a small borough or a township around here, there's still four or five dates that you have to allow them, like the July 2nd, 3rd, 4th, Memorial Day, Labor Day, and New Year's Eve. You have to allow them, but since we have that, our city is densely populated, there's just really, there's no place that they can set them off legally.
Hmm. Interesting.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Chief, before you go, I have a related question, if I may, if you'll indulge me a little bit. It's a little bit of a tangent here. I know we had some fires related to fireworks and things, and you and I had a discussion about fire hydrants and testing and those types of things, so I'm going to stray a little bit away from the fireworks, but how about the testing of fire hydrants keeps coming up? And I know that you had mentioned that PA Water does most of that testing.
Sure. I'll revert back, because this fireworks thing, it's near and dear to me. In 2020, 8 Westminster Street, we had a house that caught fire. There was eight people homeless because of fireworks. So we had that two years ago on the 4th of July, a family is homeless. So ask them if they think it's a good thing or not in a densely populated area. But, so we'll go back to the fire hydrants. The city of Wilkes-Barre contracts with Pennsylvania American Water for about 598 fire hydrants that we have citywide, and we pay, we're budgeted a little over $140,000 to lease the fire hydrants from Pennsylvania American Water. They're required to maintain the fire hydrants in the wintertime. They winterize them for us. When we're done, the fire department's done using a fire hydrant, we call Pennsylvania American Water, we let them know we use it so it can get winterized. So Pennsylvania American Water has records where they evaluate all the fire hydrants. But sometimes there's vandalism, sometimes there's contractors that use them and they shouldn't be using them. There are other things that happen. Part of the fire department's SOPs are to annually inspect the fire hydrants. Now, do we turn all 598 on? The answer is no, because Mr. and Mrs. Jones will be happy when they're, not happy when they're doing their wash, and all the water is brown that goes into there. So Pennsylvania American Water pressure tests them. We rent them from them, they make sure that they're working. From time to time, there's a nut on top, it's called a bonnet, to turn the fire hydrant on. Sometimes there are issues with them, but the overwhelming majority of the time, they work and they work properly. But that's, so it's checked twice by Pennsylvania American Water, who we lease them from, and by the fire department themselves, but we do not turn them on for the reasons why I just mentioned to you.
PA Water, give us a summary report. Do they report back to you?
Yes. Part of our ISO, and as you know, there's only 11 Class II fire departments in all of Pennsylvania of the 2,400. Part of that, or one-third of that, is water supply. When we go through that evaluation, the insurance service office speaks directly and spends weeks with Pennsylvania American Water to talk about fire hydrants and whatnot. And as most city council knows, if there's a red-top fire hydrant, that's our worst fire hydrant. Sometimes we drive past a red-top hydrant to get to a better hydrant. So when Pennsylvania American Water looks at the infrastructure that they want to change every year for us, they look at areas where the diameter of the pipe is very old or it's narrowed, and they actually put new infrastructure in the streets for us. So we do have a good working relationship with them. They do invest a lot in us, and I think our ISO and our rating in that ISO shows that for the most part, we have a fairly vibrant and good system, but Wilkes-Barre is old and our infrastructure needs to be replaced, and I think that's what they're trying to do.
Chief, speaking of fire hydrants, in Councilman Marconi's district was a fire of a pizza place, and I guess two fire hydrants, you couldn't get water from?
There were issues with them, and you read about it from time to time. So sometimes when you turn a fire hydrant on, there are pebbles that come out of the fire hydrant. If they get into an inteller in the fire pump and it gets in there, you could literally do $50,000 or $60,000 worth of damage. And sometimes, sometimes there are, when they turn them on, they get involved and there's an issue where it may not pump properly, and that one did not that night. The other fire hydrant that was involved, the bonnet on top, when my staff went to turn it on, it was kind of frozen, and then when they pushed it too hard, then it snapped. But our fire service is resilient that when that happened, we called our mutual aid partners and planes came from their firehouse in a heartbeat, you know, to back us up. So between the water we had and the fire engines, and I mentioned to the mayor, with our new staffing model, that engine tree is in service, that's at South Fire Station, that brought another 500 gallons of water that we would not have had. So it was a bad fire. Number one, there was no loss of life, no firefighters got injured that night, and we still have that building under investigation, so that's why it's not down yet.
Thanks, chief.
You saved the adjoining property. What's the damage whatsoever? Yeah, we had what's called a water curtain that, not me, my staff, they're the ones who did the good job, actually saved the building next to it. There's very little fire damage for as bad as that fire was. They saved it. I think there was less than six feet between both of those buildings, and you can see they're repairing that, you know, now.
Yeah, great, great job, chief. I did mention that in the last meeting, and very, very informative. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it all. Any other questions? If there's anything. Council presentations. Councilman Brooks?
Sure. Charlie, I got a phone call this afternoon. 3739 Stanley Street's a double block. There is a family of raccoons, about six or seven of them. It was reported by a resident who lives on Riverside Drive, and he could see it through the back, it would be Charles Park, but he could see that.
The back of Stanley.
Correct. The address is Stanley, but it's... And then the high-rise, Valley View High-Rise on High Street, the, I've been getting a series of complaints of just this feeding that goes through, so they're not paying attention to the stop sign that's at Stanley Street, right there. And it seems that, whether better, the residents of the building sit outside, and there's a little store across the street, and they're taking their life and their own hands crossing the street for that. And then I've come bearing gifts. There is a wonderful book that the Booster House 3 Library put out.
I thought this was a coloring book.
No, not a coloring book at all. And it's about some character named Tony, I don't know who it is, who gives tours of Wilkes-Barre, and it's a delightful book. It's not just for children. You'll see, it is also for adults in teaching our local history and with the attractions around town. So I just wanted to commend the library and the authors, Madison Black and the illustrator, Melinda Bennett, who did a just fantastic, first-rate job on it. So I just wanted you guys to have a copy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mike, if you want to color it, go right ahead.
Councilman Marconi?
Yeah, I had a couple. Just, I sent many emails this past week to Charlie. I also had a meeting with him this morning, and I just want to thank him for all the help that he's done over this past week. I really appreciate it. The other thing I just want to touch base, and I have some handouts too, but it's not a coloring book, so everyone knows. And I just want to touch base on junk vehicles. I know Mr. Barrett and I are pretty passionate about that. I'm sure everyone on council is passionate about it, but I just want to just pass this out and see how it went with Charlie as well, too. Hey.
Hi, Mark. I have a question.
So yeah, this is, yeah, this is the ordinance of, you know, storage of motor vehicles on private grounds, just junk vehicles, that kind of stuff. It just seems like getting around the city, not only in my district, but you're driving around the city, we all go through everyone's districts, you know, for some reason or other. It just seems like there's more and more of these vehicles just, you know, abandoned. I know it's on private property. I've had conversations with Mr. McCormick about this before. I thought the understanding was that this was rewritten so we couldn't get, maybe sued? Charlie, do you know anything? You want to jump in on that one?
It was prior to my time, but that's a solicitor's. That'd be a tin response. I don't give legal opinions.
No, 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 no. I know, because you and I had this conversation a few times, but it's very clear. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here that's very, very clear. There's some, you know, subordinances too that get into this as well. If we need to, I don't know, change language on this, or, you know, if we need to just take a look at this, and, you know, not just myself or Mr. Barrett, I mean, if everyone on council, you know, wants to jump in and just take a look at this, maybe if we need to, again, rewrite some of this language, maybe we should take a look at this to make it easier for our health department, you know, for our code department, for our police department, you know, to remove these easier. Mr. Barrett, you want to jump in too? I know you're passionate about this as well as I am.
In my experience, I've found that sometimes, and Charlie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but sometimes there's a little bit of indecision as to whose responsibility it actually is to enforce these types of things. It's a health issue when you have a junk car sitting in a lot and animals are living in it or something, obviously, but it's a safety issue, and the problem primarily is going on to private property and enforcing something. I think that just draws a little bit of hesitancy on whoever's responding. How far can you go, especially if the owner of the property is uncooperative? They don't want to do anything about it. I know that we can issue citations against the owner, but I think that we need to maybe look at the ordinance and come up with a clear policy on who actually is responsible for these types of things. It seems like it might be a health issue, it might be a code enforcement, it might be somebody else, it might be a police, and I'm not quite sure. I don't know. I think that just draws a little bit of hesitancy on whoever's responding. How far can you go, especially if the owner of the property is uncooperative? They don't want to do anything about it. I know that we can issue citations against the owner, but I think that we need to maybe look at the ordinance and come up with a clear policy on who actually is responsible for these types of things. It seems like it might be a health issue, it might be a code enforcement, it might be somebody else, it might be a police, and I'm not quite sure, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. So maybe our attorneys can look at it and say, hey, maybe it should be the police, maybe it should be the parking enforcement, maybe it should be the health officers or code enforcement, whoever. And we're, I'm really not sure who actually does it. I think whoever draws the short straw is the one who calls and takes care of it, but if you drive down any alleyway in any neighborhood--
Yes.
--and look behind homes--
Absolutely.
--you're going to find them. They're all over the place. They're littered all over, and they are health hazards. They are a safety issue. Kids can be in and out of them, vagrants can be living in them, animals are living in them, and they just degrade the whole neighborhood. So I think we need to ramp it up a little bit. The fines are there, the ordinance is there, I think it's, it just goes back to enforcement, who's going to enforce them, and we need to clamp down on them a little bit, so that we have a clear, clear policy on what we do about it, how we handle them.
There's plenty in that ordinance and the fireworks ordinance that covers everything. It's all about enforcement, in my opinion.
It is.
Right, right.
If we don't enforce it, you can write anything you want to write.
No, I agree, Mike, and--
You read this over, I mean--
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty clear.
It is. I agree with Mr. Barrett, too, you know, but you're right, you know, because sometime in the ordinance here, I read it a couple of times, you know, some, sometimes it says police, sometimes it says health, sometimes it, you know, so who's exactly, like you said, you know--
Well, the above.
Who's, yeah, but, you know, like Bill said, you know, someone, someone might be afraid to go ahead and do it. So if, I don't know, if we want to leave it like this, I don't know if we should, you know, clean up the language a little bit. Maybe we can speak with, you know, Attorney Henry and Maureen, if you want to get involved, you know.
Ideally, we go to somebody's home, we knock on the door and say, listen, that car in your yard, it's got to go. Got to do something with it, got to get out of there. And they do it. It's when they don't do it. That was my father's whatever, you know, and it's going to stay there. It's my property.
An NTA, NTA writeout to them, and after that, the site.
After that site.
Right, and again, I'm referring to, you know, abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles. I'm not talking about someone's sixty-five Chevelle. We're not going to take that out of your yard, you know, not looking at that. But, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, and, you know, if you disagree with me, like I said, maybe we can all take a closer look at this with our attorneys. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett, anything today?
The only thing we have outstanding is Memorial Day is quickly upon us, and Monday is the Parsons Lions Memorial Day Parade starts at ten o'clock on Monday, and everyone is welcome to attend and participate. I know the police and fire department's going to be there. Thank you, everyone. And we just hope for nice weather, and, so it starts at ten o'clock. It starts from the Anthracite Cafe on Scott Street, parking lot there, and it's a nice tribute, and it's a nice thing that we have going there, and hopefully everyone can make it. So that's all I have, sir.
And that's a heck of a long walk. I did that a couple of times. I can't do it anymore, Bill. Give me a bicycle.
Somewhere.
That's a heck of a long walk. Is that all? Is that all?
That's all, yeah, thank you.
I just want to commend Mike Slusser, Mayor's administration. Fine Arts Festival downtown on the square was a big success. I heard from so many people, they loved it. They really liked it, and this is the kind of thing we should be doing in the summer every weekend, something. Get some kind of activity on the square, get people together. It's a great thing for the people and for the city. Secondly, on the other side of that coin, where you have, Mill Creek, we're fixing up. I've had two meetings with three different people about the Salmons Creek. One's the upper side, you're Gregory, which I know you're very well aware of, and the other is down on Waller Street area, where the wall was replaced, but now the opposite wall is in danger of collapsing. We really have to get to this. You know, the residents are coming down on me, and I don't blame them. Everything they show me is, it's coming down, it's just a matter of when. And I'd like to see us really move forward on it. I know the mayor did say he was trying some stuff on it, and trying to get some RFPs going, but we need to do this quicker than we are. Thank you. Anything else? Motion to return?
Charlie? Charlie, can you get the spin numbers every Friday?